Okay, Agenda Item Number Three is public comments.
We have none at this time, Judge.
Okay. And Agenda Item Number Four, Certificates of Completion and Awards. And right now I have one. Okay, Certificate of Training, this certifies that Genevieve Martinez-Wilson. Okay, I guess that means Wilson County. "I have successfully completed this cyber security awareness training program requirement for fiscal year 2023, Texas Cyber Security Course HB 3834-102922." I guess that's it? No, nothing else?
Yes, no, I don't have anything else.
Okay. And we're gonna run Agenda Item Number Five and Number Six together because the extension activity reports, we don't have any. So, we're gonna do Agenda Item Number Six, Richie Del Jackson County Judge, Allison Raylock, 4H, and Youth Development Extension Pageant, National 4H Week Proclamation, and she has...
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge. So, we have our County Council here with us. So, we have Joshua as President, Caitlin is our Second Vice President, Nicole is our Secretary, and Connor is our Treasurer. And so Joshua is going to read our 4H Week proclamation.
Whereas, the Wilson County Commissioners' Court is proud to honor the 4H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service for 115 years of providing experience-based education to youth throughout the Lone Star State. And whereas, this admirable program, which seeks to provide a learning experience for all youth through their head or hands and health, helps young Texans to acquire knowledge, develop life skills, and form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing members of our society. And whereas, the program's more than 550,000 urban, suburban, and rural youth participants, ranging in age from eight to 18, hail from diverse ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds and truly recommend, represent a cross-section of the state. And whereas, the program undoubtedly could not have achieved the success that it has today were it not for the service of its more than 22,000 volunteers, who have given generously of their time, talents, energies, and resources to the youth in Texas. And whereas, throughout its proud history, the 4H program has developed positive role models for countless Texans and through its innovative and inspiring programs, continues to build program, continues to build character and to instill the values that have made our state strong and great. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Wilson County Commissioners' Court hereby designated October 2 through 8, 2022, as National 4H Week in Texas and commend the 4H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service and the many men and women who have made the program a success.
Thank you. October, National 4H Week Proclamation. Second motion by Commissioner Faal, second by Commissioner Martin, that we designate October 2nd through the 8th, we designated October 2nd through the 8th, 2022, as National 4H Week. And recognize the proclamation. Okay, is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank y'all. Y'all want to come up for the picture? Do you have something else you'd like to say?
Yes, and we were just going to say that on Sunday, we were doing our Monday 4H Project, where we are going to review three of the garden bins escaping around the courthouse, so. So, thank y'all.
What day is that?
Sunday.
Sunday?
Sunday. Yes.
Where do we go, right here? I tell you what, come around behind us.
The bus in front of you, you look better.
Can you get us all in this?
I think so. Everyone just keeps smiling. Thank you.
Does that tell you, I found fourteen?
It's not.
Mine is definitely not.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to Agenda Item Number Seven. Gary Martin, Commissioner, precinct one, discussing take action on setting a public hearing for the designation of county roads 104 and 105 as no through trucks.
Yes, good morning. So, I had a request from the residents of county roads 104 and 105 to make them no through trucks. Apparently, some, we caught some trucks coming through from the sand plant coming back over going east. And so I've received those requests. The procedure is, is I've received those requests, the next step is for us to set a public hearing date. And that should be, and I forgot to bring this.
November 14th, 2022, Monday, November 14th.
Yeah, yeah. November 14th, for a public hearing on that, and at that time, we'll have a public hearing and a technical record vote to declare those roads no through trucks. So, I make a motion to have a public hearing on November 14th for the designation of county roads 104 and 105 as no through trucks.
Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Perdola. We said Monday, November 14th, 22, to a 10:00 AM public hearing to designate no through truck traffic on county roads 104 and 105. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay. We've got that done. Now, we're going to Agenda Item Number Eight. Richie Del Jackson County Judge discussing take action on resolution authorizing county grant, Texas Department of Agriculture Texans Feeding Texans Home Delivered Meal Grant Program. I had it stuck to the bottom. Ah, thank you. Spooked it up for something else?
Yes.
Okay, this is resolution authorizing county grant program year 2023, a resolution of the County of Wilson, Texas, certified that the county has made a grant to Comal County Senior Citizens Foundation, an organization that provides home-delivered meals to homebound persons in the county who are elderly and/or have a disability and certifying that the county has approved the organization's accounting system for the fiscal agent, whereas the organization desires to apply or grant funds from the Texas Department of Agriculture to supplement and extend existing services for homebound persons in the county who are elderly and/or have a disability pursuant to the Home Delivered Meal Grant Program. And whereas, the program rules require the county in which the organization is providing home-delivered meal services to make a grant to the organization in order for the organization to be eligible to receive program grant funds. And whereas, the program rules require the county to approve the organization's accounting system or fiscal agent in order for the organization to be eligible to receive program grant funds. And be it resolved by the county. Section One, the county hereby certifies it had made a grant to the organization in the amount of $2,059 to be used for September 1st, 2022 through August 31st, 2023. Section Two, the county hereby certifies that the organization provides home-delivered meals to homebound persons in the county who are elderly and/or have a disability. Section Three, the county hereby certifies that it has approved the organization's accounting system or fiscal agent which meets fiscal management system requirements for set forth in the Texas Grant Management Standards promulgated by the Texas Confederate Public Accounts, introduced, read, and passed by the affirmative vote in the county on the 10th day of October, 2022. Okay, this is what supports our... And we don't have, actually, I don't think there are any home-delivered meals, but we do have the meals every day at the Expo Center. And this is what we've done for years. We did it before that, it was the... What, out of Saguine? They did it for years. When they couldn't provide it anymore, they'd come out to County Senior Citizens. Central Texas? So, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the grant for the Texas Department of Agriculture Texans Feeding Texans Home Delivered Meal Program through Comal County.
I'll stand.
Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Wylie, to approve the resolution authorizing county grant program for year 2023. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Are you ready for this? Okay, Agenda Item Number Nine. Richie Del Jackson County Judge, Agenda Trevino County Auditor, discussing possible award, material hauling, material plus hauling bid.
So, we sent out a second addendum to revert back to the original bid and to change it from annual to a ninety-month, a ninety-day contract. And so we did receive all of the signed addendums from all of the vendors except for one agreeing to the ninety days.
Who is your seller?
Uh, Tim. Yeah, this was the first we could get.
Can we approve everybody except them? Yeah.
I'll make a motion to award the material hauling and material plus hauling bid for Nino Transport Sales, Adiscosel Materials, Brontex Materials, Colorado Materials Limited, Ergon Asphalt, Gem Materials, Peace Square Emulsion, and Vulcan Construction Materials.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Perdola. Is there a description of the addendum?
That's what I handed out.
Yeah, that, okay. It just says that they agree that they understand this award will be an award for ninety days.
Wilson County Commissioners' Court voted on this date to accept the original pricing submitted by all respondents on November 4th to modify the term of the contract to ninety days from the date of the award instead of twelve months by signing okay. That was what the agenda was, to go from a year to ninety days. Okay, motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, Agenda Item Number Ten. Richie Del Jackson County Judge, Jim Stewart, County Sheriff, discussing possible action to approve a purchasing exemption for the Wilson County Sheriff's Office under Local Government Code, Section 262.024, for the immediate acquisition of vehicles needed to preserve and protect the public safety of county residents.
Yes, sir. Jim? The reason I'm here today is I got the grant for two vehicles for population Lone Stars. And to fulfill that grant before it runs out, Ford, well, all of the fleet companies, all of the fleet business with the manufacturers, they've been real hesitant about giving production dates. The only real way for me to guarantee vehicles is to order retail. And ordering retail, of course, they go over the buy board bid process. And in order to do this without going through the bid process, statute allows us to grant this exemption for this one-time deal. And I'd like the court to give that exemption. So, I go in and order those vehicles and get them paid for during this grant period.
Do they have the vehicles on site?
No.
You still have to order them?
Still have to order them. It's the only way to guarantee delivery.
Yes.
Can you tell us what the difference in cost will be?
I think the current cost on trucks was like $40,000. Pricing on my retail would be about $50,000. When it came to $50,938. So, it's $938 over required bid price.
It's a crazy time. And these are Tahoe's?
These are just Ford F-150s. I haven't priced Tahos that way yet. They still haven't get, they still haven't give a production date on the Tahos for next year either. So, I may not even get them. Right now, they haven't even given a production date.
Are you getting these through Pantera?
Actually, I went to Caraway Ford and priced one. Bare bones that are sold and added at invoice.
The attorney told me at the chamber meeting we were at, if they're supposed to order 100 vehicles, they'll get down three out of 100.
And when they opened bids, I bid two Ford pickup trucks, I bid three Chevy, no, two Chevrolet pickup trucks, because I didn't know if either one of them would go. And they don't, they don't hold us to the order, because they'll sell them somewhere else. So, I ordered Chevrolets, and I do know that at the most, I'll only get one of the Chevrolet pickups, because Colorado Country already told me they only got three, they're placing orders for six, and they only got awarded three. And he said, "I'll only be able to give you one." So, it's almost looking like we're in, we're in the point where we're gonna have to go retail on vehicles, period. I think the manufacturers are kind of pushing it. That we're gonna be, we're gonna be in the retailing vehicles in order to get them.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchasing exemption for the Wilson County Sheriff's Department under the Texas Local Government Code, Section 262.024, for the immediate acquisition of vehicles needed to preserve and protect the public safety of county residents.
Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Faal, that we take action on going ahead and ordering the vehicles via Local Government Code 262.024. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, moving right along to Agenda Item Number Eleven. Rebecca S. Purman, permits and development director. 11A utility permit. A 11A1 permit number 698, Sunco Water Supply, Precinct 4, County Road 409. Review and approve.
So, permit 698, Sunco Water is proposing to trench from the intersection of F9537 and County Road 409, a long 409 on the east side of the road for 3,780 feet, four feet deep.
I need to see this, I'm not aware.
Okay, they're crossing 409?
So, the original site plan...
Is someone gonna do something there?
They're not crossing 409. The original site plan that they submitted was incorrect. So, the yellow highlight line that you see on the site plan there, it's tough to see, is what they're doing. They're trenching along the road, they're not cutting it.
Oh, it's along the road?
Correct.
But in the county road?
In the ditch, yeah, in the garbage.
Okay.
I know it's tough to see, but they're correcting the site plan that they submitted.
How far are they gonna go?
Almost 4,000 feet. 3,780 feet.
Oh.
And this is Sunco, correct?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve the trench.
Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Perdola. We approve permit number 698. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, moving right along. 11B, pipeline crossing permit, 11B1, permit number...
You can do one, two, three.
Okay. Number 132, Recore Resources, Precinct 2, County Road 250, review and approve. B2, permit number 133, Recore Resources, Precinct 2, County Road 250, review and approve. And B3, 11B3, permit number 134, Recore Resources, Precinct 2, County Road 250, review and approve.
So, okay. So, they're proposing to lay an oil gas line across County Road 250. It's actually, it's three separate lines in the same trench. Or, I'm sorry, they're boring. So, it's three separate lines, they're the same boring. They're all four-inch blue lines with a six-inch casing and will be installed for 37.44 lateral feet.
How big a flow line?
Four-inch.
Four-inch?
They're bringing water over the way from Comal County and Wilson County. I worry you're discussing with the judge.
I'd rather have their own with their water, but we'll take that. Permit number 132 and 133 and permit 134, road crossing County Road 250.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Faal, second by Commissioner Perdola. We approve permit number 132, permit number 133, and permit number 134. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Taking care of that. Now, we're going to 11C, non-standard plant variances. C1, US Highway 87, 10936, Precinct 3, Hendrix, discuss and take action.
All right, Mr. Hendrix owns six acres at 10936, US Highway 87 West. He is proposing to sell one acre. He did meet all the requirements and it received a favorable recommendation from the Development Review Committee. The only one about this one is they got the text dot approval, but those, with the division of the lot, they'll have a shared access driveway off of the highway.
Is this the one where text dot, they were going to text dot to prove the electric line going over 87?
Not that, no, it wasn't approved by them. It was, yeah.
That was the only question, was they gotta scare the same driveway from the distant driveway that down?
Where Mount 87 is?
Should be right next to ESD 3.
Yeah.
Because they're 11,000 something.
It's close to it.
Probably where they're building that born and concrete driveway, just on the south side of ESD 3 office.
It's not that one.
It's close.
It is close to it. So, it's actually just a few, couple properties over from where the redemption subdivision that we did recently. It's a few properties closer to over in the map.
If it's received a favorable review, then I'll make a motion that we accept the non-standard plant variance on US Highway 87, 10936.
Second.
Who seconded it?
Martin.
Motion by Commissioner Perdola, second by Commissioner Martin. Did we approve the variance on 1, C1, US Highway 87 West, 10936? Question, for this property, they say that they haven't got an access, they haven't got access off 87?
They do have access off of 87. So, the original property's driveway will, there's, he's gonna have to move the driveway over a bit for this new one acre tract that they're cutting out. And so both the...
Both are gonna be the same?
Both of them will have the same access point and then they'll split off.
And that's because of text dot, right?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, just curious system. Okay. We're gonna motion a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, moving right along to Agenda Item Number Twelve. Eva S. Martinez, County Clerk, minutes.
Yes, sir, and they have been properly reviewed by our county attorney, Tom Caldwell, and the judge.
Lady, I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion, second?
Motion by Commissioner Faal, second by Commissioner Perdola. We approve the events of the preceding units, meetings, September 12th and 26th. Is there any discussion, changes, additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, moving to Agenda Item 13. Christina Moose, Intom County Treasurer, financial report.
Good morning. Your shirt can't be as well, or sign.
Good morning. What was handed, excuse me? What was delivered is the reportings of, of course, the ending of August 31st, 2022. So, the month of August.
I'll make a motion to approve treasurer's report.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Wylie, we approve the treasurer's report. Any questions, additions, additions, discussion, anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. AP, agenda item number 14, Jalen T. Otter, Human Resource General Specialist, pay low on personnel changes.
Good morning. Jared Reynolds was hired as a patrol deputy for the Sheriff's Department, making 2260 per hour, $49,358.40 annually, effective October 6th. Caleb Rios was hired as a patrol deputy for the Sheriff's Department, making 2260 per hour, $49,358.40 annually, effective October 6th. Vicki Kimble was hired as a part-time employee with the library, making $15 per hour, effective October 11th. And Leroy Mahon was terminated from his position as a corrections officer with the Sheriff's Department, effective September 28th.
That's it?
That's it.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a formative, there's no line item changes or anything like that, so... Okay, moving right along to agenda item 15, Ginda Trevino County Auditor, various personal models, uh, bills.
You're gonna see some bills on there that are gonna be for the start of the fiscal year, so our normal software agreements, insurance, I believe there's a vehicle for the Sheriff's Department and then outfitting that. So those are the bigger items on this. And then some of these are also gonna be for the last fiscal year.
So some of these will be last year, some of these will be this year?
We will get some of the invoices from the vendors for the September transactions until October, so we'll probably...
Will you still be getting our invoices?
We'll probably get invoices, probably till beginning of November. So that number's not gonna be for the current fiscal year, all of it will be for the current fiscal year.
I'll make a motion that we accept. Please present it.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Perdola, second by Commissioner Martin, we accept the bill that's presented. Is there any changes, additions, deletions, anything, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving right on to the agenda item number 16, the one we were waiting for, agenda item 940.